Tanya Marcos-Fano to come forward. If I have this correct, this is your first day on your new job?
It is, yes.
Tanya's been with us for, as a partner of the City of Southfield, as the head of the Southfield Chamber of Commerce for the last eight years. We greatly appreciate her service. We knew we wouldn't keep her forever. She's had gone back to school and got a lot of training in urban development and planning. So she is now the Operations Manager for MEDC, a Michigan Economic Development Corporation, downtown, in the downtown office, doing Pure Michigan?
Business Connect.
Business Connect. So anyhow, council, before you this evening, and I'm going to ask for, through the chair, for a motion to approve, we have a joint resolution, a tribute to Tanya Marcos-Fano, September 16th, 2019, and I'd like to read it. Whereas the Southfield Area Chamber of Commerce is dedicated to making Southfield area a great place to do business, creating connections through membership services, innovative programming, business and networking events, marketing and more. And whereas, appointed as Executive Director in October 2011, serving until September 2019, Tanya Marcos-Fano brought fresh and innovative leadership to the Southfield Area Chamber of Commerce, forging strong relationships with chamber members, community leaders, city and county and state officials. And whereas during her tenure, Ms. Fano managed an annual budget of $250,000 and the day-to-day operations of a nonprofit, increasing the chamber's relevancy with the city government, business members and community at large. Whereas among the many signature events hosted by the Southfield Area Chamber of Commerce, credit is due Ms. Fano for the success of Taste of Southfield, which we just experienced probably the best yet last week. The annual meeting of the State and State of the City address, annual Chamber of Commerce golf outing, Excellence in Southfield Business Networking Group, Wake Up Southfield, monthly mixers, quarterly luncheons, educational seminars and numerous grand openings and ribbon cuttings. And whereas Tanya Marcos-Fano is responsible for establishing a five-year strategic plan, updating the Chamber of Commerce Operations Manual and Bylaws, Board and Employee Handbooks, implementing brand equity and IT system, developing volunteer committees and training staff. And whereas always current with new and emerging trends to help businesses increase profits, Tanya Marcos-Fano created opportunities for business leaders to continue learning and stay connected. Whereas on Friday, September 16th, the area, Southfield Area Council or Area Chamber of Commerce, rather, its members and the Southfield community will reflect on the successful efforts of its Executive Director, Ms. Fano, as she embarks on a new chapter and new opportunity. Therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and council of the City of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, do hereby pay tribute to Tanya Marcos-Fano, Executive Director of Southfield Area Chamber of Commerce, and thank her for her dedication and service to the citizens and businesses of the City of Southfield, and we wish her every continued success.
Thank you. It's been an honor and a privilege working here in this great city of Southfield. The work we've accomplished, and I say "we," we've accomplished over the last eight years, rebuilding the Southfield Chamber of Commerce has been exciting and challenging. With the support of my Board of Directors, this great City Council and the great mayor, I've established myself as a respected leader. So thank you all for believing in me and helping me to be successful in leaving the Chamber in a well-established position. I'm confident that my successor will be able to take the reins and continue with this momentum. Thank you Mayor Seiver, City Council and the City of Southfield. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yep, Mr. Mandelbaum.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution, the tribute to Tanya Marcos-Fano.
Support. Removed by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Fraser, that we approve the joint resolution in tribute of Ms. Tanya Marcos-Fano. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. And again, congratulations and thank you for all your service and time. Next, we have a review of the Public Works Capital Improvement Program. Lee, are you going to do that for us? All right, because we're booting up here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm glad it worked. I had no idea how to troubleshoot in this room, so it's just took a minute there. So I'm here this evening to update City Council, as well as the public, on all that we've accomplished through our capital improvement programs in the Public Works Department. Tonight, we'll be presenting our capital improvements project review from 2014 to 2019. This includes our metrics on our road improvements, water main improvements, and our sanitary sewer capital maintenance. I'll also review our upcoming 2020 to 2022 capital projects and then review some of the lessons learned since we've been undertaking all of this work, and then be here to answer any questions that you may have. So as a recap, just a brief recap, from 2014, when we did our first borrowing, oh, and council, so you know, you do have a copy of this bar point presentation in the backup information of your council packet, if you'd like to follow along there. So in 2014, the city passed the $99 million road bond. This was to be used on both local and major roads, and the first project to utilize these road bond funds started in 2015. And the adjacent chart here, you've heard about Pacer ratings, but for those that aren't aware, Pacer is a road condition assessment that is required for use across the state of Michigan, so that we're all comparing apples to apples in Michigan here. And so we've been collecting Pacer data since 2008. Actually, before that, Southfield started evaluating our road networks with a different software program as early as 2001. And what this was showing is where we were in 2014 with our Pacer ratings and the direction that we were projected to go without increasing our level of investment. The green line there shows our goal at the end of a 10-year investment of where we were hoping to be at a 6.3. Starting there, we were at a 4.6 in 2014. So some of the metrics here, we have accomplished a lot since 2014, and we start with 2014, that was before we used the road bond dollars, but it was really marked, that 2014 was the year that really marked the heavy investment in our public infrastructure. So we include those numbers here. We have improved 81 miles of roads. We have replaced 173,000 feet of public water main and have invested $150 million in water mains, roads and some sanitary sewers as well. On the bottom of this slide, you'll see additional work that's under contract because we have another big program this year. We've got 18 miles of roads that have been awarded, 50,000 feet of new water main installation, and this equates to another $35 million in improvements. For a total from 2014 to 2020, actually, because some of these 2019 projects that are under contract now will be completed in 2020, that totals $185 million. So to break down the expenditures a little more between the different funds, you can see on the left what we've spent in roads. Our road bond funds that we have spent thus far is $63.5 million, and then in projects that we have awarded this year in 2019, that's another $16 million in road bond funds. And then we include $11 million that we had spent in 2014 as part of that capital improvements that year. That, of course, included our Evergreen Road out front. It also included Evergreen Road between 8 and 9 Mile, as well as one or two other projects that were a little smaller. And then we had our water and sewer capital expenditures between 2014 and 2018 as part of these projects. That's been $47 million that we've invested into mostly water and then some sewer. And then this spring in 2019, there was authorization for water and sewer bond funds, and so far, we have committed $19 million in just 2019 projects that have been awarded. Many of those projects are two-year projects extending construction through 2020. The impressive number here to me is between 2014 and 2019, with all of this $85 million in investment, $27 million of that investment was using outside funds in our infrastructure. And those outside funds are, were predominantly invested into our road system. That's where the federal funds are available. And just the metric for tracking how we do compared to when we come to council seeking authorization, overall, the projects are tracking on average 6.87% below the authorized funding amount. Certainly, some of those, we've taken all the way up to our 10% contingencies. Others, we've hardly dipped into our contingencies at all. So overall, we're pleased with where we are. And this just goes further into more detail, specific to the road bond expenditures. There have been a lot of questions about how much money we've spent of our road bond dollars. And there's a lot of numbers on this table, but we can focus on, our total bond proceeds have been $80.2 million, and that's what we have borrowed so far of our $99 million. And so what we have remaining to bond or to borrow would be $26.6 million. You can see what, you know, totaled out there what we've spent, some interest earned, and then the capital encumbered, those are the projects that we have awarded recently in 2019 that are currently under construction, though all of those funds have not yet been spent. And thank you to Austin Michaels, our Director of Fiscal Services, for helping me pull all these numbers together. It was a lot of work. Then an overview of a map of where we've been. So it's a city map. All of these highlighted routes have had roadwork. Many of them have also had water main work. We've, you can see, we've spent, percentage-wise, pretty equally, we've covered, 31% of our major roads have been addressed, and 33% of our local roads have been addressed. This map also reflects 21 additional miles that have been awarded by council and are currently under contract. In the end, this represents 63 total projects across the City of Southfield since 2014. This is why we've been so busy. So back to our Pacer rating chart. So we've just really added one more line here for where we anticipate to be when our currently awarded projects are complete in 2020. You can see the red line at the bottom. That's where we would have been had we not passed that road bond and been able to invest in our road network. The light green on top was our goal. We're trending slightly below our goal, certainly making improvements and trending in the right direction. And in the end, our goal of 6.3 is not really out of our reach. We'll see what these next years bring and how the costs are controlled during construction. I'll revisit in a little more detail of some of those reasons why we trend a little below what our initial goals were. I don't want to spend too much time on this slide, but it's really showing the reality of what that average Pacer rating for our network looks like. And this is really showing our pavement network condition broken down by mile between poor, fair and good condition. So this is how we've been trending since we've been collecting Pacer data in 2008. And this is really what my team dives into every year to determine where to invest our precious road dollars next and to ensure that we continue trending in the positive direction. This is what drives pavement management, is looking at where to invest your road dollars, at what time, to extend the life of the pavement. Good pavement management, invest the majority of dollars to extend pavement life. And now moving on to the water main improvement metrics. Across the city, we've replaced 42 miles of water main by the time the projects that are under construction now are complete. This map looks very similar to the last map where you saw the road improvements. This is intentional, as the strategy was to prioritize water main replacement programs where we also had poor-conditioned roads. And council, you've also seen similar data about water main breaks and how we're trending downward, which is no surprise since we've replaced 42 miles of aged sewer. These are, one of the things that we've learned as we've been keeping track of this, is to have this data become more valuable, we realize we want to break out the cause of these water main breaks further than just saying there was a break, because we need to know where the aging water mains are. There's many water main breaks that are reflected on this chart. We now realize, looking back, that were really caused water main breaks. It could have been a utility company that hit a perfectly good water main, and we want to be able to filter that out. We also tend to have water main breaks in the neighborhoods during our construction projects, because we're digging and installing new water main very close to fragile old water main. So in order for this to be more valuable to us, we're going to work to filter out the causes of the water main breaks that are shown here. Certainly, to the water department, responding to a break, it doesn't matter to them what the cause is, but from a capital planning standpoint, we need to know what the real numbers are and where the real aging water main is located. And our sanitary sewer capital maintenance, this is a project, we're still collecting a lot of data right now. We're approaching the end of a two-year SAW grant project that we have to have complete by the end of this calendar year. But as part of this SAW grant, it will be setting up an asset management system, and the first step of any asset management system is understanding the condition of those assets. So we have been aggressively televising our entire sanitary sewer network. This data in the table is shown from October 13th to June 2018. We've got 89% of our public sanitary sewers inspected. Of those, 13% have been lined as a result of the condition that we found. This is a critical piece to asset management, particularly for our underground sewer infrastructure that's very deep. They're large pipes. They're very expensive to dig up and replace. You know, we don't, we would, we need to get into these sewers and know what's going on in them before we end up with a sewer collapse like had happened on Franklin Road a few years back. So Southfield really has been very progressive in the sewer lining. They first started doing some lining in the late 90s. It was a little more reactive at that time. In areas where we had sewer backups, maybe caused by root balls, we could get in and put liners in, make sure that we were sealing up all those joints to not allow tree roots in. We started getting a little more proactive with our lining program in 2004. And this is a metric that Larry Surles and I always keep an eye on. This is some information from the City of Southfield's percentage of flow in the Evergreen Farmington Sewage Disposal District. The majority of the City of Southfield is within this separated sewer district, and we trend, we're trending down 2.9% of our total flow into this, contributing to the system. There's multiple communities that are part of this same, this same Evergreen Farmington District, and with all the work that we've done, this is just kind of reinforcement that our investments are not just good for the environment, but good for our bottom line. And this is showing where we are tentatively expected to go with our capital improvement projects in the next three years. On this map, we've got 42 additional miles of roads here. This includes another 50,000 feet of water main replacement and represents 24 separate projects. So everything highlighted includes roadwork. Some of it includes the water main work and a little bit less, mostly around the Tenon Greenfield area, where we still are moving forward with sewer separation projects. So some of our challenges and our lessons learned and our next steps here. Restoration has been a challenge. I mean, we're $185 million of investment, and most of the time, we're talking about getting the grass to grow in front of all of these properties when we're done. The large-scale restoration is a little challenging on these jobs, but, you know, we've been in front of 8,500 parcels with our construction. That's 44% of the properties in the City of Southfield. And there've really just been probably less than 100 properties of all of those that we felt like we've been struggling with. To improve the response to getting the restoration, we have modified our landscape specification, and then our Department of Public Works has begun to assist us with the maintenance of these projects. Costs. Now, these costs are really directly impact that Pacer rating chart that we're on Slide Number Eight, and that is the difference between what our goal was, Pacer, and then the reality of where we are, which was a few points lower. So some of the reasons for that, the construction costs, especially recently, have inflated beyond our assumed levels of construction cost increases. We've also have added some additional improvements on our projects. The original project assumptions were just, all of those road bond dollars were going to be spent right into that road pavement and not on additional amenities. We have done other upgrades. They've been very worthwhile upgrades, in my opinion. We have done signal upgrades, which are good safety improvements for our intersections. We have added lots of non-motorized upgrades along our major corridors, like our sidewalk gap filling, some on-street bike lanes. We always have to remember, our road projects are serving all users of our roadways these days, not just the vehicular traffic. We really just had one capacity improvement project that I can think of, and that was Evergreen between 8 and 9 Mile. We went from a two to a three-lane road, so that's additional investment per mile. And then we have county roads through the City of Southfield that when the county comes in to move those projects forward, we participate in the cost of that. We think these are worthwhile. Those were, once we started fixing a lot of our major roads that were in poor shape, the county roads were really the next ones that needed to be fixed to serve all of our residents, as well as our business community. So future funding considerations, some of the things, we'll need to evaluate funding levels as we move forward. The state has been slowly increasing our Act 51 dollars. Will it be enough to sustain our desired level of service and to preserve the investment that we've made already? That is yet to be determined. One of the things, to be aware, not every road will get touched in this 10-year program with major capital maintenance. Some of the roads at the start of the road bond were really in good shape to begin with, and they've maybe only had some joint sealing and things like that. Those type of very light maintenance are not on our project maps at all. Some of the next steps, we just need to rethink our strategy, need to stay focused on the rehabilitation of our roads more than the reconstructions, and that's just keeping in mind our pavement management philosophy, so that we're spending our road dollars wisely and making these roads last as long as possible. We also, majors compared to locals, you know, we've been so successful in obtaining outside funds that a lot of major road projects, you know, we're, are moving forward, and we fixed up most of our worst roads with a few more still yet to come of the majors. We just need to focus back and target our local roads to make sure that we're meeting our Pacer goals there. That's really everything. Are there any questions?
Any questions, council? Mr. Mayor?
Lee, first off, a great report. We've been waiting for an update. One thing I think you went over a little bit too fast in your presentation, and I think is very, very important, especially for the audience here tonight and watching at home. The fact that the residents passed the 2014 road bond gave us the ability to apply for grants. Grant, no one gives you road dollars just flat out. You have to have a matching, a matching contribution, and that, and again, it's in your presentation, but we matched, because of the road bond, we stretched that by another $27 million. That's really, really significant.
It's astounding.
And I know we've been convenienced a lot of people with our road construction. Obviously, it's very necessary, but we have led Oakland County in road construction for the last five years. So we're a lot farther ahead than many other communities. So we're, matter of fact, before the meeting tonight, someone came up and said, "Thanks for fixing the roads." They hadn't been here, they moved and come back and seen the results of five years of work.
Great.
Thank you.
Mr. Mandelbaum?
Thank you. Lee, this was, again, a great presentation, and the maps that had the current and future road projects, as well as what's been done in the past, that's available on the website?
Yes, it is. So under Public Works, under Construction Projects, there are, there are two PDFs, one for our current and upcoming projects and one for completed projects. So that's available online, and we'll keep those updated as, as things may change.
Okay. Also, I had a question on Slide Number Eight, where the Pacer ratings were. Between 2008, 2012, the Pacer rating seemed to be at a very slow decline, and then all of a sudden, in 2012, it starts dropping significantly. Is there something that happened during that timeframe, or is that just because the roads were all built around the same time, different weather conditions?
Yeah, that's a great question, actually. And in the life cycle of our roads, we, we had started having, you know, foreseeing the reduced road funding reduced road funding crisis back in probably around 2000. And so, we knew we were headed this way. We knew we weren't investing enough in our roads. And in the life cycle of a road, when the roads get to a certain deterioration rate, the deterioration starts to speed up. So, once you start getting into that lower end of fair condition to the top of poor, it's like, it takes a nosedive really fast. And, and so much of our road network was teetering at the point that it was ready for that nosedive right there, and you had already started to see that decline. And our first couple of years, we were especially aggressive with our capital programs, trying to capture some of these roads before they just required complete reconstruction. We did a lot of mill-in overlays in the neighborhoods. We did a lot of concrete slab replacements in some concrete neighborhoods. And we just need to continue to prioritize those type of projects, because once they're down in the poor condition, whether you're a three, or a two, or a one, it's like, we're really waiting till you're a one, and then hopefully we have money to start chipping away at those poor-conditioned roads. Once they're poor, they can't go down anymore. So, the focus really in pavement management is to maintain those fair-conditioned roads, invest light dollars on those roads to pop them into good, and, and make sure that we're doing that preventative maintenance.
Okay. The other question that I had, as these roads are completed, it's a nice, smooth surface, there's no potholes or anything like that. And as many of my colleagues can attest, one of the number-one complaints we get from residents is speeding through the neighborhoods. Is there any, has there been any thought? I know on Winchester, we put in some traffic control measures by, you know, squeezing the road a little tighter in certain spots. Has there been any other thoughts about possibly speed bumps or speed humps on some of the longer streets or some of the cut-through streets to help prevent some of those speeding areas?
Right. I mean, speeding generally, our common response is that it's an enforcement issue more than anything. That being said, our, our policy has been to not install what we consider, it's like installing an obstruction in your public roadway or installing a hazard. But the, I think, over the years, over the decades, there have been some different type of options now. When you say speed table, that's, you know, 20 years ago, there weren't speed tables. They were just speed bumps, and we definitely didn't want those. So, it could be something to reconsider, something to talk with administration about and our Public Works Group to see if that would be appropriate, because we do receive a lot of complaints about speeding. They're not always all they're cracked up to be. Sometimes they result in other problems, but that's part of what we can look at, the different options that are available, and whether they are potentially included in a future road project or maybe are done by petition, we'd probably have to look and, you know, establish a policy. So, I think you're probably always going to have a handful of people on, especially some of those cut-through type of local roads, that want those speed bumps or speed humps installed. And then, you've got people that are just against them, not because they like speeders, but because they don't feel that it's appropriate on a public road.
I mean, even now, they have the transferable rumble strips that sometimes you can add to the street. But if, if, if I may, through the chair, I'd like for administration to take a look at some of those control measures to see if that's something that we could possibly do in the future, and then even to some of the existing roads.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Brightwell.
Lee, this is an excellent presentation, and it's very timely. And since I'm canvassing the neighborhoods now, there's several questions that I get, and I have to give individuals a lesson on Pacer ratings. But a couple of slides, and this saves us a telephone call, but item number 12, what do, what do liners do for us?
The sewer liners?
Yeah.
In the sanitary sewers? So, when we are seeing structural deficiencies inside a sanitary sewer pipe, our sanitary sewers are at least 10 feet deep. So, digging them up used to be the way to fix it. That hasn't been done much since sanitary sewers have been mainstream, since these liners have been in the market now. And so, they are installed inside the pipe. They have structural capacity, so even if in the future your pipe starts falling apart, that liner now becomes your pipe.
Okay.
And, and then they have about a 50- to 100-year life, depending on the product and who you're asking.
Okay. No problem. I know, we normally hear this, Mr. Zorn, I'd, I'd like to use this number two, but I want to make sure I got the number correct.
Okay.
Water main breaks. I'm starting back in 2011, what were we having, 140, and we went down? What is the current average water main breaks? And, and when was the highest number? It's right?
Yeah, it looks like 2011, we were at 140, and we've seen a little uptick in 2019. And that's when I started talking to Larry, and he started realizing, you know, these are not all just due to age. Some of them are, because we still have neighborhoods to come into. But it looks like we were down as low as like 38 in 2017.
Right, right. Also, so, I can just say we had about an eight, what, 40-something? Down from 140, something like that.
Yeah, down about 100, a year or less, which is fantastic. Water main breaks are very expensive to respond to. And every time we're not investing money responding to a water main break, that's more money that we can invest in capital projects for this system.
And plus, they're, they're disruptive. But this is an excellent presentation, and it's very timely, and it answers a lot of questions that I get frequently while I'm out knocking on doors, so I appreciate it. Thanks, Lee.
You're welcome.
If I may interject, Mr. President. The Public Works Department estimates that about a third of the current breaks are actually private contractor caused, too. And we do charge, you and I recently had this conversation, we do charge those contractors back when we can identify the party who caused those breaks.
All right. Anything else from council?
Excellent report, Lee. Thank you.
Very well done. Thank you.
Moving on, we have four appointment, so two reappointments and two appointments, two to Parks and Rec and two to Center Center.
Mr. President, while we're waiting, I would like to thank Lee Schultz, Austin Michaels, Linda Staton, Rhett Grandeveld from OHM, a large amount of time went into putting this report together. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
This evening, as you've seen on your agenda, we have two appointments, reappointments to the City Center Advisory Board. I know Kimberly Person is, Peterson is here, if she wants to, if she'd come up. The City Center Advisory Board, as you know, is a representative of property owners or managers in the City Center District of the city. It's important to have our businesses fully engaged in our city center promotion and so on. So, Josh Sardini, I don't think is in the audience. Josh has actually served as an alternate, so in a way, he is now officially becoming the designee from the Etkin Company, that's also part of the district. Kimberly is with the Transwestern that runs the, or manages the Town Center properties. Also, I'd like to invite up a reappointment of Brandon Gray to the Parks and Rec Board. I know Brandon's in the audience. And an appointment, we have a retiring member of the Parks and Rec Board, Ron Roberts, who's served for many years, like to acknowledge his service. And in his place, I'm appointing, recommending for appointment, rather, Adam Wolfe. Adam?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Frazier?
I move that we reappoint Mr. Brandon Gray to the Parks and Rec Board, and that we appoint Adam Wolfe to the Parks and Recreational Board, and that we reappoint Kimberly Peterson to the City Center Advisory Board, and we appoint Josh Sardini to the City Center Advisory Board.
Support.
All right. All right. It's been moved by Mr. Frazier and supported by seemingly everyone. We'll go with Mr. Brightwell today, that we accept the two reappointments and appointments as suggested by the mayor here today. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Congratulations, everybody.
All right, our clerk?
Ready for the oath?
Just raise your right hand for me. I do solemnly swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this state, and the city charter, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Parks and Recreation Board, City Center Advisory Board, and Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I just need you to sign. Mr. Gray, you're first, sir.
And once you all sign, if you wouldn't mind coming up, the council would like to shake your hand and congratulate you.
Ms. Peterson, you're here. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Wolfe? Right there for me? Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Turner. Congratulations. That's fixed.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. That's giving a board of measure. Yes, sir. Okay. Yes, sir. Congratulations. 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 Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. That's giving a board of measure.
Yes, sir. Okay. Yes, sir. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. That's giving a board of measure. Yes, sir. Okay. Yes, sir. Congratulations. Congratulations. That's giving a board of measure. Yes, sir. Okay. Yes, sir. Congratulations. 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 That's giving a board of measure. Yes, sir. Okay. Yes, sir. Congratulations. 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 That's giving a board of measure. Yes, sir. Okay. Yes, sir. Congratulations. 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 That's giving a board of measure. Yes, sir. Okay. Yes, sir. Congratulations. 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 That's giving a board of measure. Yes, sir. Okay. Yes, sir. Congratulations. 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 That's giving a board of measure. Yes, sir. Okay. Yes, sir. Congratulations. 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 That's giving a board of measure. Yes, sir. Okay. Yes, sir. Congratulations. That's giving a board of measure. Yes, sir. Okay. Yes, sir. Congratulations. That's giving a board of measure. Yes, sir. Okay. Yes, sir. Congratulations. That's giving a board of measure. Yes, sir. Okay. Yes, sir. Congratulations. That's giving a board of measure. Yes, sir. Okay. Yes, sir. Congratulations. That's giving a board of measure. Yes, sir. Okay. 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 Yes, sir.[1584.33] Well, if I could, through the chair, what, I think what we're asking for is to go line up, line item facility by facility and ask for the vote. I mean, you certainly can introduce all of them at once, but based on our previous discussion, we were going to take one at a time. But again, that's through the chair.
That was the original idea for us to do individually.
So the first one for consideration would be the safety compliance facility and/or what, the short term is medical labs.
Okay, can we get a motion on that one?
Make a motion, we approve that item, the number one item, safety compliance facility.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we support the safety and compliance recommendation facility. All right, are there any other questions? All those, oh, we're going to do a roll call vote, sorry. Madam Clerk?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Fracassi?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Morris absent. Taylor?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Adopted for the safety compliance facility, the medical labs.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Fracassi.
To Terry, you know, I get so many calls on, near the map that is online where the possible marijuana would be approved. And this ordinance helps out stating, you know, what the rules are. But boy, I have people asking me, you know, you know, I'm going to try to buy this place, can I get a license? Can I move this into that? I just wonder if this is, should be with something that spells out how many of each building, where and how and whatever is going to be.
Right.
I know I approved this, but I know that that's probably the biggest question that's out there is, you know, we have a map, but how do we proceed? And I said, you know, I really don't know.
If I could.
And that's going to be a lot of heat on his body.
The city clerk, city attorney, and the planning department will be making presentation next week on licensing, which is a part of this. Some communities have outright said, we only want three of this.
What? I'm sorry.
That some communities put a limit on how many businesses they want citywide. The map that I presented to council in the past takes all the buffering requirements and the underlying zoning and says, these are the potential sites that they can be. For example, right now provisioning centers, there's only up to six. And that's based on today's knowledge of where schools, religious institutions, parks, pawn shops, and so forth are. So it's just, it's just a benchmark. When, as part of the licensing requirement, one, they have to have site control, so they have to have either own the property or have the owner's permission to apply. Secondly, they need zoning approval, which as I stated, in all cases except safety compliance, they have to come and get special land use approval by city council. Once they have those two things, then they have to go to get the city license in concurrence with the state licensing. So there's several steps. That includes federal background checks by our police department and all the other things. And as part of this process, on an application-by-application basis, we will actually go out and vet and look at land uses to see if something's been missed in our overall process. You are going to have a daycare facility open up at a certain point, or one close down, which could change the buffering boundaries. So there's, there's going to be some fluidity throughout. But based on the maps that we provided was to give the council a potential idea of how many we were talking about. Now, the council said they didn't want clustering of the provisioning centers, so we added additional 500-foot separation from provisioning centers, which then reduces where they could go and how many. So once one provisioning center opens up and you got all those buffering, then they have to meet the additional 500 feet. With regards to the grow facilities, the state allows 500 Class A, 1,000, or 1,500 Class C marijuana plants, but they can be stackable at the same location. So in theory, you could have a 10,000-square-foot facility that meets all the zoning and buffering, and then it could have multiple licenses for 1,500 plant at the same location. Each one of those will require special land use approval and then specific vetting by the city and then a state license. So what we've provided based on council's direction is the regulatory parameters for your consideration for each of the five potential medical marijuana facilities. And then they would have to come back through the special land use process on a site-by-site basis to get approval. So you would still have that extra protection of, in this particular case, we're going to, you know, we're going to drill down and look at all the things around. There'll be public hearing required at the planning commission and council, so if there's something we're not aware of, Jason property owners, the public at large can come and make comment on those. And the fact that we have, we're allowing the zoning to limit the total number, we do not have to get into a lottery system, or grading system, or any of those things that other communities have done. You have to have site, you know, site ownership or permission from the site. You have to meet the other requirements, and then it's, you know, first come, first served, date stamped application gets approved through the process will determine who and when a license may be granted. And again, they have to pass on the other background. To, to help the clerk's department, they're not going to accept any licensing applications until the zoning's been approved. So we're not going to have 20 people applying for one site if the zoning hasn't been approved. So that, that should reduce the amount of requests and work that we have to do until and unless the council approves a particular site or a particular business. And again, that's, that's been our approach. We've vetted this through many other communities.
But you know, there are corporations in the city that do not want dispensers anywhere near them.
We understand that, and they'll have a right.
And threatening to move out of the city, and I'm very concerned about that. And, and I, it may be that way in special neighborhoods and things like that. So this is going to be a strange feat to go through.
And I'm fully aware of that, and that's why we have a public hearing process, so that if a corporation, a neighbor, resident, adjacent property owner has concerns, they have a right to let us know about it, and they would be notified.
All right, I'm going to move on to the next one.
The next one is the grower facility.
Yes, Mr. Mandelbaum?
If I can, through the chair, to Terry. Can you review those locations again, please?
So the grower facility would only be allowed in light industrial, industrial, or within the Northland ODD. They're required to be 500 feet from residential district or uses, a drug-free school zone, which is 1,000 feet by default, adult regulated uses school, religious institution, childcare facility, or park, and then 1,500 feet from a pawn shop or alternative financial services establishment. And we also have a further regulation that the light industrial, industrial districts have to be adjacent to Eight Mile. So per your previous overlay of the tech corridor and telegraph, none of those industrial, light industrial districts would be eligible. So it only, there's two clusters on Eight Mile that potentially have it, as well as potentially at Northland if you, you know, so approve that.
Okay, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the grower in the city of Southfield with the restrictions as identified by the planner.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve the grow facilities under this particular ordinance or zoning ordinance. Madam Clerk?
Fracassi?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Motion passed for the approval.
Okay, the next, next medical marijuana facility for your consideration is the processor. Again, this is a license authorizing a purchase of marijuana from a grower and sale of infused products or marijuana to a provisioning center, so it's not to the public. It's going to be subject to the zoning. It can only be allowed in light industrial, industrial, and the Northland ODD has the same setback buffering requirements as the grower. And again, needs to have state license, city license, and meet the zoning.
Which one are you on right now?
Processor.
Processor.
So this takes the raw material and processes it into various products, but it's not for sale to the public. It's only for sale to a provisioning center.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the processor under this as identified by the planner.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve processing, processors under the zoning ordinance as proposed. Madam Clerk?
Frazier?
Yes.
Taylor?
So this, just so that I'm clear, this is just for them, are they growing the product? They're just?
No, they have, they purchase it from a grower and they produce it or manufacture it into various products. So they're not growing on the facility. It's a packaging, processing, infusing, you know, they, I'm just going to use the term gummy bears or other oils. It takes the raw product and creates it into various products.
Okay, yes.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Have you finished?
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Can we specifically look at how it's listed here as C, D, E, and F and G? I don't have the documents that you had a couple weeks ago when you were talking. I don't want to see that. I want to see the, you gave us some real thick document and referred to the articles, Article 9, and what they were in that.
We still have a motion on, I mean, we're still going to roll call vote though. All right, so yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Fracassi?
No.
Motion passed for the processor.
Okay, the next, the next, the next consideration is a secure transporter, and it's the license, the authorizing of storage and transportation of marijuana and associated money between facilities. It would only be allowed in the light industrial, industrial, Northland ODD. It is permitted on the telegraph road because it's not a manufacturing business. So that was, that would be an additional couple areas on telegraph.
That includes the telegraph 12-mile area?
No, no, it's the lower telegraph.
By the tech corridor?
That's right.
Okay.
This is the only marijuana, medical marijuana facility that would be allowed in that section because it's not a manufacturing base. It's more of a transportation thing. And then the hours of operation would be a half an hour earlier and a half an hour later than the grower processor to give time to go to and come from those, those facilities. So it's really just the secure transporter, and they will have a limited storage time for money and/or marijuana.
Mr. Chair? I make a motion that we approve the secure transporter as identified by the planner.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we support the secure transporter recommendation under the zoning ordinance as presented. Ms. Mandelclerk, if you call the roll.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Fracassi?
No.
Frazier?
Yes.
Motion approved.
The next one is the provisioning centers, and these are similar to retail operations. And licensee can sell marijuana to a qualified patient or registered primary caregiver. It's per the zoning. These would be allowed in B3 general business and Northland ODD, should you approve that. Has the same restrictions, but an additional restriction of it has to be 500 feet from another provisioning center. And hours of operation, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And it has the special land use conditions. Retail sales includes sales, packaged products, and supplies to registered qualifying patients directly or through a registered primary caregiver.
We have a motion on provisioning centers.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the provisioning center, retail establishment as identified by the planner.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve provisioning centers as stated under the zoning ordinance presented by the planner. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Taylor?
No.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Fracassi?
No.
Frazier?
Yes.
Approved.
And then the final item is amendment to the Northland ODD, including the definitions portion of the ordinance to allow all five medical marijuana facilities within the Northland ODD, and also to permit automobile dealerships in only the retail portion of the Northland And again, this, this would be subject to the ODD process. So this is like your development agreement, and specific conditions of approval can be negotiated through the process. So we start with the, all the buffering and requirements as a base. But for example, and I've just used this as a point of discussion, if you want to limit grow facilities to only underground through the ODD, you could do that. If you want to say, we only want three provisioning centers on the site, this, all of those things would be specifically dealt with through the ODD process. So we start with the underlying zoning, and then, then we negotiate a development agreement for the 125 acres. Now, the buffering still applies to anything outside of the district that encroaches in. So there's portions of that development area that would be off limits because there's residents within 500 feet. Anything within the district itself would be negotiated through that ODD process. And that's where you can put different parameters on those, those five marijuana facilities, or you can choose to only allow one some or none. But this would at least just make it eligible for those, as well as the one auto dealership that's interested, and you have a letter of intent for that southeast corner of the property.
Question?
Yes, Mr. Frazier.
That description that you just went through, is that for the ODD only, or is that, can we limit by function throughout the city?
Well, you're already, you're already limiting by function through the zoning throughout the city?
Yeah, but if we say we only want two provisioning centers.
Well, you have that right through the state law to do that, but I would, I would suggest you do that tonight.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, but, but instead of saying a hard and fast number, the way we've sculpted this is that we would be limiting them based on the zoning.
On the zoning?
Yeah.
But you say there are like six places?
Potentially.
Yes, but can we say, even though there are six potential places, we really only want to have?
Three?
Yes.
Okay, that's possible, but then we might be getting ourselves into then have to do evaluations and scoring.
Okay, then.
Do it that way, and the only thing, just for your consideration.
Yes.
You have that right to limit. But what we try to do is base it on other similar types of uses in our district, our zoning ordinance, and we do not limit the number of retails. You know, it's market-driven based on you meeting the zoning. And, and so that's the model that we chose. The state law does allow the city to limit the number of each and any facility, but that might have some unintended consequences for us as far as then coming up with some type of scoring system, tracking, and so forth. And I'll defer to the city attorney before you make a decision, but that's been our approach, is to limit by zoning. And I'm just saying that the ODD gives you extra control, where you can put further limitations within the district itself.
Right, through the chair, we have, through this ordinance, tried to craft restrictions based on the zoning. Other cities have put numbers on provisioning centers. Some cities are involved in litigation, because if you put the numbers on, then you have to come up with some type of scoring or criteria for how, you know, how you're going to accept the numbers of the provisioning centers.
This is a rather unique circumstance that we're dealing with.
I agree.
In other situations for commerce businesses, if we had, for instance, people that wanted to be tailors, I, you know, I wouldn't want to have, you know, 15 tailor shops right in a row either. So it's kind of like apples and oranges when we say we've never limited in other circumstances, but.
To my, my point was that we have to be able to defend why we're allowing in certain districts.
And I understand that.
And this wasn't the only reason, but we're trying to take a market-based approach with our zoning, with our buffering, and allow that to limit the number of facilities. And that's the approach we've taken for adult regulated uses, alternative financial institutions, and other similar types of things. So that's been our pattern, even though we have additional conditions and requirements for those facilities. The state does allow you to give a finite number on these things. And I want that to be clear.
So if we don't do it tonight, we've lost our opportunity to do it?
Well, we could always amend. We can always come back and amend, but.
Okay. I just don't want to trap us into a situation that after the dust settles and we think our way through this, we say, we shouldn't have done it that way.
Right.
I agree, I just, I just, though if that was the direction that council wanted to go into.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with it.
Then let's, you know, let's just put a number on it tonight, because this, this is being approved and introduced, it'll be enacted, you know, next month, and then the licensee is going to come right after that, and then we're going to get. the licensee is going to come right after that, and then we're going to get flooded, you know, we'll probably, I'll probably have 15 phone calls tomorrow, but, you know, we want to prepare ourselves.
Okay.
So, any, you know, any other questions, those are good questions, but we still need to act on this last item.
I understand that.
I have a question. Can you remind me why we put the auto piece along with this number six?
Because, because we're in essence amending the Northland Overlay Development District. If you wanted to take out the marijuana, you still have a lot of interest or intent from a car dealership to go at Northland that's not currently permitted. So we're, we're look, we look at all the amendments that we have to do at Northland to allow for a car dealership that's.
Could we have broken that separately just to vote on the car dealership piece, and then the other?
You could, you could have, I just, we parceled them all together because they're all amending the ODD. You certainly, if you want to add another layer and vote on that specifically, but we also have update to a definition of what a hotel is, we also have setback dimensional requirements that are being amended to allow for the greenfield retail development, they're all part of the Northland ODD amendment. Now, tonight, if you, certainly if you want to pull out some of the marijuana stuff, that's fine, but we have them packaged as Northland ODD amendment, because there's several pieces to that amendment above and beyond this marijuana discussion.
Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Brightwell?
I would like to see, I would recommend that we approve the amendment to the Northland ODD to include and to mirror exactly what the planner said.
Support.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve the, the recommendation of the change to the Northland ODD, or the amendment to it, which also includes the retail auto dealership as well. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Fracassi?
Yeah, let me, see, I was just talking to the assessor before this meeting, and, and when you're selling property, when you're selling property and you have a license in a certain place, the value of that property is extremely more than if it were a, just a commercial building. And I was asking him, how do you assess when, when you, when people are buying like 25 acres for $36 million, and, and how do you, how do you assess that? Because of the use, now the use doesn't stay that it's like normal commercial, it is, right now, you're dealing with money that is out of sight, to be honest with you. And, and, and I don't know, when you're selling something for $9 million, and you're taking, you're taking, what is it, 80 acres, and you got 25 acres going for $36 million, and you're giving away 80 acres for, for $9 million, something's wrong somewhere. And I guess I'm just trying to figure out, when you're zoning something, you know, it's just like industrial from residential. When you give that use in that facility, that building and the usage goes into another range, and, and that's what I can't quite put my hand on, and that's why I'm asking the assessor, and they really don't have an answer to. And, and so how do you evaluate or do an analysis of a piece of property and the use, and, and not, not put a, a dollar value to the piece? And that's very important, because that's what you're going to get hung with.
Those are, those are good questions, I just want to remind the council that there's, I'm going to just say, there's currently 25 uses that are permitted in Northland. There's about 25 uses permitted at Northland in the Northland ODD. You're just adding six additional uses, the five marijuana facilities and the car dealership. But there's residential, hotel, office, medical, and all those affiliated uses are currently permitted. All you're doing at this point is amending the ordinance to allow for these additional six uses. They still have to come back to council on a, on a parcel-by-parcel, case-by-case basis to get the actual approval to operate these businesses.
Yeah, but I'm talking about how you put a value on even Northland, which I oppose. How do you put a value on Northland, and you, when you change the use from senior citizen housing, which was on 25 acres, and you're talking about 80 acres going for $9 million, and then you have different uses on that piece of property? I, I just don't see, I just don't see how you put a value on property when you don't, when you're changing the use of it, to something that we are not normally looking at. And, and it does exist, I mean, you've got people following this crowd all the way, every council meeting, trying to figure out what they can buy and get it cheap, and, and their value goes 10, 20 times its value. And I'm a real estate, I understand that business, and that's, and that's going to be something that's going to put a lot of heat on a lot of people. And I don't think that, and I'd like to see the assessor answer that question of how we're going to look at a piece of property that's going to be zoned to something that you haven't had before, because that certain use puts a different value on a piece of property.
Ms. Taylor?
I know it's, you've made a motion, Mr. Brightwell, but can I ask you to amend your motion? I'd like to vote on the auto piece separately.
Would that affect it to Terry at all?
No, no, it doesn't.
Can we do two separate votes?
Yeah, certainly. Yeah, but I, I don't want to, I also, you know, he made the motion, he needs a second, then we'll need a new motion, and you can make a motion just to deal with the auto dealership. You can decide on the marijuana stuff, but there is also a few other amendments that are packaged under there that deal with dimensional requirements that could affect the greenfield redevelopment. So I, if you want to separate all three from each other, or at least parcel the dimensional requirements, the definition, and the dealership in one motion, but I don't want to forget about the other things that are part of the, the ODD, so if you don't cover it, I'll make sure I bring it up as a separate motion.
Mr. Chairman, one more question. Do we have a city that has a similar ordinance?
Well, we took, we relied heavily, I'll just say, we relied heavily on Lansing and Kalamazoo as a starting point, and then we tailored it over the course of six months to what we've done in the past and what we think was best for the city of Southfield. So this is not a template, rubber stamp from any other community. Each community is different, and they have different requirements, and they have different standards. But I, we did rely heavily in the beginning on Kalamazoo and Lansing as a starting point.
See, what I'm trying to get at, we have stores that are selling CBD today, and, and now, and now they claim there's a problem with that, taking the oil and use it for other uses like candy, all right? Well, if that is done, whether it be legal or illegal, that sign that they have out there with selling CBD, nobody understands that over here, you're taking that CBD and, and using it for different things, and not what it's actually stated it is, but it's now changing. And there's several articles of late saying what's really happening to even that particular usage.
Just, just on the CBD, the state has said that if it's under a certain percentage of a product, they're not regulating it.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
So, just, just like anything that people use things improperly.
But they're taking that product and doing something else with that same product, so we're making it legal, but, and state is, and, and it's being used for something else that's worth twice the money. Can I ask the city attorney, can I change my votes on the items I voted for, rescind them?
Yes.
I want to ask, want to ask the clerk or the city attorney?
Well, I think we would have to redo the vote.
Pardon?
We'd have to redo the roll call to bring it back.
Okay. Chair, I'd like to have those items that I voted for brought back up so I could vote negative.
I think you can't bring, only the maker of the motion can, can bring it back, I believe.
And are you asking on each of the prior uses?
Legally, I can do that.
I'm sorry?
You voted negative.
On some of them.
On some of them, you did vote, yes.
I want to rescind my affirmative vote.
The safety compliance, you voted yes. And the grower.
I think it was only two of them, wasn't it?
Correct, you voted two, and the affirmative.
Maybe we can just get through this one first?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, willing to amend my motion, but, to just deal with the car dealership only, but I would like for the council and ordinance to know that Northland was a very hard sale nationwide, so we do have a car dealership that's interested in moving to Northland, we have other individuals who are interested in Northland. Believe me, Northland is a very hard sale. And the fact that the planner assured me and this council that the planning and site plan, this council has a say so that goes on, anything that goes on in this city, no matter what we do tonight, we eventually will have to, to approve the site plan, the appearance, and also what goes on, on any of these particular items. With that, I do amend my motion to deal with the car dealership only.
Separate from the?
Separate, separate.
Separate, and then just, there'd have to be a second for that.
Yeah, okay.
Support.
So it's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we first take a vote on the Northland ODD amendment?
No, he's going to amend it to the.
Just, just allowing the car dealership as a use.
That's, that's the.
To dis, to disallow. No, to allow.
To allow the car, the realit, retail auto dealership on Northland property.
He wants to separate the, the most, the two parts.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
So you don't want a dealership?
No, I don't want anything.
For consistency, Ms.
I want to ask Mr. Brightwell if I can.
I'm sorry?
I want to ask Mr. Brightwell if I can, you have the floor? We got a vote.
Mr. President?
Let me just say this to you, when you talk about Northland, and I'm, like I said, I know a lot of people who've discussed it, looked at it, and they look at the plan that we had originally planned for Northland, and that's the way they looked at how it was going to be developed, and whether or not they're interested. Since that time of the plan that was given an award to, to us as a city has changed, it's no longer the same plan that we spent money with a consultant to, to have done. So what, what we really have done now is we have permitted, or are going to permit, a usage that is totally different than, than what it is marketed at. In other words, Friedman really did not say to their people that we could have this rezoned for this use, because that's how it's going to, going to be zoned, or whatever. We're talking about a big parcel, 80 acres. At the same time, at the same time that you're looking at, at that piece and saying it's not worth anything, it's because of the plan that was derived from this body and it won the award. If the people from Auburn Hills would have come here with a total plan of, of tech buildings, and changed the entrance way, and got rid of the name Northland, it, it is a better location than the Summit, the Palace, Silverdome, and Wixom, because having a piece of property that you have engineers at and, and tech people, you know, you're the only one out of the five that I mentioned that have people that have a bus going to the site and can get, draw employees from Detroit. The other ones, they have no transportation, and that's going to be the difference between value. And, and so I'm saying that, you know, this has not been marketed in any way the way it's being looked at today. And, and I don't think that the money that is being put on the table beats the criteria, even if it was all commercial.
I just, just for the record, when we use the term car dealership, you're technically approving auto truck sales and showrooms, I just want to make sure that's the way it was presented in, in the chart, and it would, it's only for the shopping district, so it'd be limited only to the southeast corner of the property.
Okay.
Actually, I want to go back, can we take a roll call, vote on that for the dealership, please? Madam Clerk?
Mandabom?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Fracassi?
No.
Frazier?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you. And that was just for the Northland allowing the car dealerships?
Auto truck, truck sales and showroom. Just so we're clear. If someone comes with a truck and you say, what, we didn't approve that. So it might be appropriate now to discuss the allowing the five medical marijuana facilities in the district.
Go ahead, I can't quite hear you.
This, this, the next, the next item that you would be taking up is, is allowing the five medical marijuana facilities, safety compliance, grower, processor, secure transporter, and provisioning center, all within the Northland ODD boundary.
Okay. Well, the main motion was, as you presented it, we split it into two motions, we amended the motion to, to vote on the auto truck agency sales and showrooms.
Right.
But we still have the balance of the main motion.
That's right, I just didn't want to, there also was a talk of possibly separating that from the other requirements, but if you want to do them all at once, that's fine.
Yes, that, that I think was the only, only issue.
So just the remaining amendments?
So we're on a separate motion, and we're still under the same motion?
Yes.
Is what you're saying, correct. So then we can take another roll call, vote on the Northland amendment?
I don't know if that was, his motion was not seconded, I don't believe.
I didn't.
Oh, he asked the first, all right.
Yeah.
Now we're good.
Yeah, if there was no second, it was because the amendment.
Yeah, okay.
Amendment was the second.
All right.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, we did.
Cruz?
Yes.
Can we repeat who made the motion and the support?
Yes, it was Brightwell and supported by Frazier.
Okay. Brightwell?
Yes.
Fracassi?
No.
Frazier?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Mandabom?
Yes.
So now that all of these separate items have been approved, you can introduce ordinance number 1709, zoning text amendment, PTZA 19-002, which covers all, all of these approvals.
1709.
All right, been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we introduce ordinance number 1709 zoning text amendment for PTZA 19-002. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Got one no from Mr. Fracassi. Thank you. Okay, moving forward, go on to Communications. All right, so when your name is called, would you please come up to the lectern? You'll have three minutes to speak, and our first recognition to be, to speak is Ms. Pamela Gerald.
Since everybody is moving around, why don't I get an opportunity to go to the restroom, and we can come back when I go to the restroom? and we can come back when I go to the restroom? Can I go to the restroom? I have to go. So can you call everybody else since there's no particular order?
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office, Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. Tonight I'd like to talk about numbers, yes, numbers. Ordinance, numbers. One specific ordinance, number seventeen oh eight. Recently I was reading my favorite newspaper, the Southfield Sun, the one newspaper that every Southfield resident gets a copy of for free. And I was reading my favorite section, the legal notice section. And on page fourteen, I'm sorry, page twelve, I noticed an ordinance entitled, ordinance number seventeen oh eight, and it had to do with marijuana. Now, up until this point, everything is okay. Then I turned the page to page fourteen. And guess what? I found another ordinance, number seventeen oh eight, having to do with zoning. Now we have two different ordinances using one number. That doesn't seem to be very kosher to me. I only bring this to your attention as sort of a public, uh, duty. And also, anyone who likes to play the lottery might think this is an omen, to pick seventeen oh eight. Thank you, and lots of luck.
Thank you. Ms. Gerald.
I just want to get right down to what I have to say. December of two thousand and fifteen, against the residents' opinion, the city of Southfield decided to become savvy in the real estate business, and you purchased Northland for two point one million dollars. When Channel Seven interviewed me regarding the contamination in the city of Southfield, the bedbugs and the asbestos, I made a statement, and I said, before you get Northland to the point where you could even think about development, you had to remediate the asbestos, and it would be twenty to thirty-two million dollars. This city has not been transparent about the money that has been spent on Northland. Now, we were told that Northland was a prime piece of property when you purchased it, and it wasn't, but at one time it was. Southfield had the oldest regional mall in the United States, right here in this city, built in nineteen ninety-four. All the money that you've spent on Northland, the security, the lights, the plans, the visioning session, the best you could come up with is crushing concrete in an underground medical marijuana store? I totally agree with Fracassi. How dare the city sell eighty-eight acres of property for nine million dollars when people were supposed to be standing in line to buy Northland? Why isn't that property going for twenty-five million dollars? Twenty-nine point five million dollars? Nine million dollars is a drop in the bucket. Divide that by eighty-eight acres. That's a bargain basement price. And the best we can come up with is a weed store. Now you heard Mr. Barron tell you, coming from Detroit, that when they did that in Detroit, they had elevated crime. You had a developer stand here and tell you, they didn't come to Southfield to spend their money to be in a city that has an industrial developmental weed district. Now I think you guys are bit off more than you can chew. When these businesses start leaving here and going to Northfield, going to Novi or Farmington Hills, you're going to remember this decision that you made. This is one of the worst decisions in thirty-seven years I've been around this city that you guys have made while brothers sit in jail for weed crimes.
The time is up. Thank you. Next request for recognition is Mr. Keith Harris.
How you doing today? All racing life matter, P.O. Box twenty-six seventy-nine, zip code four eight zero three seven. I agree with you, Mr. Fracowski. I agree with Ms. Gerald. What you're doing is wrong, blatantly wrong. I mean, I'm sitting here listening to our city planner. I never hear him talking about bringing new schools. We got sex-dial brothels and weed, and the only thing I think our planner is good for is a hand job because that's exactly what he giving to the people. You know, I'm telling people, we got to tour the community, especially the Jewish community, because, so we can see how they live. New schools, religion, they put religion and education first. In our community, we haven't built a new school yet, but we, we talk about weed, we talk about sex-dials brothels, we giving tax abatements, and none of these abatements help us build new schools for our kids. The mayor is bringing in, for every new business to come in, they give money to his art fund, but not to our public school system. We are going to bring charges with the fourteen, with, with the Democratic Party against Mayor Ken Cyrus, and we will be heard all around the world on this one. We're going to bring charges against those who don't want to build schools. Now I'm not talking about rehab a school system, I'm talking about new schools from the ground up. It's an amazing situation, every time a community get more than fifty percent black, the first thing you take is the public school system. But we put, we wonder why our kids are in jail. You're going to even wonder more when the weed come. We got to do a better job. I'm all for medical marijuana doing great things to help our sick and our people out, you know, anybody that's feeling kind of bad. But we got to be practical about this. We should have never got into the real estate business, never. And we got to do a much better job of how we going to look after our community. We got a recession coming in, GM is on tri- strike, next thing, Ford's on strike. We're not putting the people first. Terry got to go. We got to get clean up house here.
Our next request for recognition, please, quiet, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Two one six eight five, Rougewood Drive, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three three, Stacy Jackson. I am here standing to echo the sentiments of the previous speakers. This is definitely a bad idea. I echo the sentiments that this city is not paying attention to its people and its residents. The last time I sat in this chambers, I watched as a woman stood at this podium explaining that she was a Holocaust survivor. And when I say that I was moved at the back of the room, I admire the fact that one of our councilmen who shared a similar faith and ethnic background removed himself from his chair and stood next to her. I can only imagine that moment for you. In fact, I shared that moment, something similar, when Councilman Frazier indicated that he was retiring. See, as an African American, our culture was basically tortured out of us from the moment that we got here. But our persistence, bravery, and resilience and intellect, we created a new one. I am surprised that in a city with seventy percent African Americans, that our ethnicity is only celebrated for celebratory events as opposed to belonging here. I am surprised that we have red poles that are presumed to be Asian-inspired when there's really no Asian population here. And yet, the only place that there is African American out shown in this city is the Motown mural that you actually have stored as garbage right next door. That is a travesty. Just as we have council people here who are connected and tied to other residents by their ethnic makeup or religious background, we should all be made to feel that we belong here. It is wrong for that. Last year, Mr. Harris was contacted by five hundred people nationwide that were coming here to protest because three African American men were searched and seized getting off a Northland bus on their way to FedEx to work, purportedly because they were selling drugs when they were not. One year later, I am stunned that life in this instance is imitating art, so to speak, where you're treating the residents like trash, like the Motown museum, and now we're going to have an epicenter of weed at Northland. Please stop.
Our next request for recognition is Elaine Yaffe. If you put it to the clerk, please. Thank you.
I'm Elaine Yaffe, one six nine six oh, George Washington Drive. I'm a resident since nineteen sixty-five on this street, and as far as I can recall, the street and the sidewalks have not been repaved since. George Washington Drive is a street that has deteriorated to the point that it must be repaved. It cannot be repaired, and you'll look at the pictures, I've separated them by George Washington Drive, by the sidewalks, and also, thirdly, by Southwood Drive. The pipes that are lying on the street, the asphalt is laid on top of deteriorated cement. So many areas of the street is just down to rock. Water accumulates into ice patches in the winter, and we're now told that we have to wait until twenty twenty-one, which is way out of the ten-year road plan to have it repaired, not repaved. Sixteen nine nine six and seventeen zero ten sidewalks need to be replaced, hazardous sidewalks, as you can see. The forestry department has been notified, and they said it's on their list to repair. We've heard that for the last two years. Nothing has happened, and we don't have a date. Southwood Drive, that's the other pictures you see there, I wrote on six fix click this past week and this, and Saturday, the sidewalk was cleared from the rock and debris. Someone like myself who has a disability, it's difficult walking there. Plywood should be placed in the area so that the disabled and wheelchair can, people can visit their friends and family. Passing by this evening, guess what? The sidewalk has debris and rocks again. I welcome the council members to see for themselves what George Washington Drive looks like, what the sidewalk looks like that I have to walk on, and Southwood, see what that looks like as well. I think one of the council people actually live on Southwood, and yet, I don't know why it's not cleared. The sidewalks need to be cleared, there can't be water hoses left on top of the sidewalk. You can't walk there. So that's what I'm, that's what I came to tell you. I could send you the pictures to each of you individually if you'd like, but I really would welcome you to come to George Washington Drive, please, and please give me a date as to when this is going to be repaired, not repaired, repaved. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Toby Rhodes.
Toby Rhodes, one seven zero zero one, New Jersey, Southfield, Michigan, two four eight five six nine seven one eight nine. The last speaker brought up a good point. I know the roads in my neighborhood are terrible. I know Rutland Drive looks horrible, and Pierce, Southwood, Stratford looks terrible. I remember I had a map from way back in two thousand and seven, and they said they were going to redo Mount Vernon. Of course, that never happened, but, you know, I'm like, what are you guys doing with all that money? Always claiming you broke, but, you know, you got all this money for the police department, you know, to terrorize black people. Now, I want to speak, uh, as a spokesman for the black community in Southfield, and I want to talk about Northland. That was a functional site. It was a public attraction, it attracted people there. It was, it added value to Southfield. Now, it's, it's interesting, when I was fighting the city of Southfield, going all the way back to oh nine, I was hoping that the city of Southfield would not sabotage Northland. I thought if I kept quiet and didn't say anything about it, maybe they would leave it alone, but I see that the city of Southfield was determined to sabotage the mall, and I know that's because as the city became, because I've been here for thirty years, and, in the same house for thirty years, and, um, city South has been terrorizing me for ten years, calling me a criminal every other second, for ten solid years. Now I survived a background, FBI background check not, what, a couple of months ago. So clearly, whatever you guys are on, nobody else believes it. They think you're full of crap, at least FBI does. But, um, Northland was a functional mall, and you turn that functional mall into a mess, and it takes a long time to get a commercial development, not only built, but getting customers and profitable, where it's an addition and a public good to the city, and you totally ruined it. I mean, you just totally, you deliberately destroyed it. I mean, there was an Eric Garner episode that happened up at Northland, and instead of dealing with it, because there was, there weren't no black people involved, people who were not black murdered a black man. And they got the mayor, the chief of police, and the city council president, all black to cover for these, these racist devils who murdered a black man in Northland, and that led to the closure of Northland. And that was all deliberate. It's like, if you want to, want to take all, I mean, act like you in charge and make the big decisions and take responsibility for what you did, and that's why I look at the current chief, and I know that you're going to set him up to fail, you're going to screw something up, you're going to upset the black community, and then you're going to trot him out to take the fall so you can get that other guy in, that acting chief, which I just found out from the black community is a murderer. And he's still in the Southfield Police Department, I can't get over that. He's a murderer and he's acting chief of patrol. These are the kind of people you promote, and he ain't black. I mean, I don't understand, well, actually, I don't understand what you're doing, you're sabotaging the city.
There's any basis for what you just said about our deputy chief, and so I'd just like to make a point of saying that, um, and on his behalf. Our next request for recognition is Greg Keeler. Is Greg Keeler still here?
Yeah.
Okay. We can't see you, you know, all you guys sit all the way back there in the corner, we can't see y'all back there.
Well, I have a question, as I've come up, since we have the next table that has four, four requested, for the people that are disabled.
You can, your time is going to start, sir. I'm sorry?
I want to ask some questions, because the microphone was up here.
Yeah.
The microphone is back here.
I guess you're doing it back.
It had been requested, but, you know, but we could potentially do that. It had been requested, but we could potentially do that.
Greg Keeler, Southfield resident. I would like to first start out by thanking you for having the table.
Can we please start the time clock, whoever's watching, I'm sorry.
Okay. I would like to first start out by thanking you for having.
Is the green light on?
Yes, the green light is on. I made sure first. Can't hear me?
It's good enough.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
Um, I'd like to thank you, and it would have been nice to have the table here and then let other people know that this is here for them that are disabled, since we did have a disabled speaker come up today before I did. And then you have other people that come regularly here. I would like to see the city council hopefully become more proactive, more like the police chief. He's proactive in the things he has done and the events he's going to be a part of in his first couple of weeks here where people were able to meet him and everything else. And he's having the police officers pop thing coming up. I'd like to, you know, something be just a little bit more friendly, a little bit more welcoming. Not that I would just be the only one that'd know that this table is here, this chair is here, where you're able to be able to come here and sit down and be a little bit more relaxed and not have to worry about, am I able to stand up? Can I hold on to this thing? But in a nice chair with arms and everything else that you are comfortable, to be made, felt welcome here. I know there was a question of it needed to be studied, but if you go across the street to the library, the library is an ADA building, which most of the stuff there is, the counters and the desks and everything else, and the elevators are big enough for them. You don't have to do a study, you just have to walk across the street. To be proactive, to be like our police chief, like I said, just look at the example he's doing, he's being proactive, he is showing himself. The standards for ADA were started in nineteen ninety, this is now two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, so there is no reason why it shouldn't have been done before this, it should have been done by this time. At the same time, I'm hoping that you'll be proactive on some of the other stuff that needs to be done. Governor Snyder, before he left office, he put into legislation that lead pipes would be replaced in homes. I hope it's not twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years before we get those replaced. I hope you are proactive in moving forward and starting to replace those things. But once again, I would like to thank you for the table.
Thank you. And our next request for recognition is Ms. Yolanda Haynes.
Yolanda Haynes, two four five zero one, cancel. In relation to the vote tonight, I think I saw some confusion and a lot of issues that weren't resolved, and I feel like there was not enough information to really make a vote. I know, Mr. Brightwell, you said in the closed meeting that you all had enough information, but usually you do that when you know you're already going to vote your way that you did. One of my questions is, why didn't you all think your way through a lot of this before tonight? I think that there was not due diligence done to the residents, the constituents of this city. I think that people did not know enough information, have enough information and time to get back to you all, to let you know how they felt. I think some people were afraid to let you know how they felt because they have to come before you and give their address, and that it's made public, and sometimes people are afraid for people to know where they live when they make decisions like that. I think that this is not good for our city. There are some good things that may be in it, but that's just like putting poop in brownies. So I think that we have just not done a good job on this. I mean, I know there's some money involved, and the city's going to get some money and all kinds of things like that, but there are lots of things that go with getting that money. We all should have been given more information and amount of time to know what was going on, and the residents still don't know, and some of you all really don't know all of it. And when you are for something, like the, what is it, the fracking or whatever that was, y'all got people out, you had your own community awareness bought about, even though they made their mind up too about that, you do that when you want to do that, and you do that how you want to do that. And I'm just not happy about that, and I think that, yes, Northland is a hard sell, but I think that we could have done better, a lot better. And I would like to read to you some things that I don't know if people know about marijuana, whereas it may be a cure for some people, and some people may think that it's a lot of compassion involved. There are a lot of studies that have shown that marijuana overactivates a part of the brain that controls the highest number of receptors. This causes the high that people feel, and the effects include altered senses, altered sense of time, change in mood, impaired body movement, difficulty with thinking and problem-solving, impaired memory, hallucination, delusion, psychosis. This is just to name a few of the problems. Some of the physical effects, breathing problems, increased heart rate, problems with child development during and after pregnancy. Mental effects, temporary hallucination, paranoia, worsening symptoms in patients with schizophrenia. It also has been linked to other mental health, problems such as depression, anxiety, suicidal thoughts among teens, and more. These are the things we're going to have to deal with. So while you're doing that, we already have an opiate epidemic. You're going to have to take your money now and spend it on helping these people with the problems.
Your time is up, Ms. Haynes.
It's just not right.
Our next request for recognition is Audrey White. Our next request for recognition is Lois Tyler. And our final request is Mr. Louis Williams.
Louis Williams, good evening.
Good evening.
I continue to be opposed to the idea or the plan to sell a portion of the Northland property to a marijuana grow business, even medical marijuana. It is our position that we don't want a marijuana business in our community, and I continue to ask the question, if it's such a great idea, and, you know, it's such, you know, that it's, again, if it's such a great idea, why aren't other communities clamoring to have the business come to their area? I suggest to you that it's not a great idea. As our city council, I know, I feel confident that you want to do what's best for the community. And I'm suggesting to you that having a marijuana business here is not in our community's best interests. There are too many negative potentials attached, even medical marijuana. I urge this honorable body to take action to oppose this. I mean, certainly there are other businesses that we can consider for that portion of Northland. You mentioned the car dealership, and there are other possibilities, I'm sure. But anything that could be harmful or hurtful or hurt our community, we don't want to take a chance on it. Why take a chance? If that can hurt us, damage our community, why expose our citizens to that possibility? I ask that you reconsider the idea of selling any part of Northland to a marijuana grow business, medical or otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our council portion of the meeting. Council, Mr. Mandelbaum?
Yes, I wanted to thank the administration as well as our fire department for a wonderful open house yesterday. I know the weather was not the greatest, but they did put on a wonderful open house with lots of information, and when I was there, at least everyone was having a great time. I also want to let everyone know that with the days getting shorter, the Evergreen Golf Course has a twilight rate. You can still get your golfing in while it gets darker. After five PM, you could play nine holes of golf for ten dollars, and you can even book your tee time online through Golf Now, or you can call the Evergreen Hills Golf Course at two four eight seven nine six four six six six. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to the mayor's portion.
Wanted to mention that last Saturday, LTU held its second home football game. They're off to a little uneven start, but they won last Saturday, and the tremendous turnout of alumni and students and fans and courage. I don't have the schedule with me, but there are several other home games coming up, and encourage you to come out on Saturday afternoons. They're also using the stadium on Friday nights for high school football, so a number of local high schools are playing there, including Brother Rice. On Thursday and Friday last week, we had the fourth and fifth days of Rock the Block sponsored by various companies and coordinated by Habitat for Humanity. Thirteen homes were done this past week and twelve before. That's twenty-five homes that received upkeep, everything from repairs, painting, fences, yard cleanup. This has been a tremendous partnership, and it's helped a lot of our folks, especially some of our, a number of our older residents who do not have the ability to maintain their homes, but yet, we do want them to age in place. I also want to remind you that tomorrow afternoon, from four thirty to six, we will have the celebration of art installations in the city of Southfield, public art installations. We will have certainly be dedicating the Moby Dick and the reconfigured and restored Library Fountain. And all of this work has been done through donations. Library Fountain, the donations for that were a hundred and ninety-five thousand, and then approximately eight hundred thousand has been donated for the other pieces. Pieces that have been restored are all part of a decision that we made to keep the historic Northland Art Collection in Southfield rather than lose it, it was set to be auctioned off. And we will have speaking to those pieces tomorrow, as well as the unveiling of a new piece, the Mackinaw Bridge, that was part of the Northland Collection. It's the most recent piece to be restored. And then finally, and I'll talk about this again, but we will be holding, once again, the Southfield Mid-Century Modern Architecture Tour. This will be Sunday afternoon, October thirteenth. It's in conjunction with Art Deco Society of Detroit, Doco Momo USA, the Southfield Planning Department, and the Southfield Historical Society. Tickets are available at the city center here, at Civic Center. And that will start at two PM, go to four thirty PM on Sunday, the thirteenth, starting at Charis Eddick Synagogue. It's a motorized tour and building inspection throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Administration? All right, thank you. Madam Attorney?
Thank you. In the study session, my office prepared, and I'm seeking to introduce this evening the amended fireworks ordinance. As noted in the study session, the state law was amended at the end of two thousand and eighteen, reducing the days that fireworks can be shot off in municipalities throughout the state of Michigan. And so our ordinance is merely keeping up with the state law, and we're recommending the introduction, the amendment and introduction of that ordinance.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yep, Mr. Mandelbaum.
I'd like to move the amended ordinance.
Support? They're moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve the amended ordinance to, that deals with the use of consumer fireworks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Anything else from the clerk's office? All right, thank you. We got one ordinance to enact.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandelbaum.
I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number seventeen oh seven.
Support?
Moved by Mr. Mandelbaum and supported by Ms. Taylor that we enact ordinance number one seven zero seven, zoning amendment for PZTA nineteen dash zero zero one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Anything else from the clerk's office? All right, thank you. We got one ordinance to enact.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandelbaum.
I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number seventeen oh seven.
Support?
Moved by Mr. Mandelbaum and supported by Ms. Taylor that we enact ordinance number one seven zero seven, zoning amendment for PZTA nineteen dash zero zero one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Miss Pass? Enacted, I should say, sorry. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, meeting is adjourned.[1636.51] They're moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve the amended ordinance to, that deals with the use of consumer fireworks. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's the same number, it's just an amendment. The original number is fifteen ninety-three. Okay. Not seven, do you know? No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Anything else from the attorney?
That'll do it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Got one travel expense to approve for the clerk.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Frazier?
I move that we approve the expense report for our city clerk, Ms. Hawkins, on her travel to, uh, training.
Support.
They're moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the travel expense report for Clerk Hawkins, who attended the election center conference. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Anything else from the clerk's office? All right, thank you. We got one ordinance to enact.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number seventeen oh seven.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Mandelbaum and supported by Ms. Taylor, that we enact ordinance number one seven zero seven, zoning amendment for PZTA nineteen dash zero zero one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's passed. Enacted, I should say, sorry. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, meeting is adjourned.